Guys, we're live. That's everybody. So, thank you, Matt. I appreciate the thumbs up. We will call the work session to order. We are very, very fortunate to have with us today Senator Williams. And we have invited all of our legislators, both Representative Robertson and Senator Angela Turner Ford and Representative Shaq Taylor. And I had gotten a thumbs up from Representative Robertson and Senator Turner Ford, but she is not on at this point? Oh, she's in person! How exciting! Come join us, please.
How are you?
Pick seat. Pick seat, thank you so much. And so that, well, that takes care of that. We get the two senators, at the very least. Thank you much. I see Mr. Lincoln, so...
The deliberate chamber.
Yeah. There you go. If we get, if Representative Robertson or Representative Taylor buzz in, would you give me a high sign and let me know? Okay, all right. So, I thought what I would do is allow y'all to tell us, from your perspective, what's going on and then let some of our folks here maybe ask some questions about things. So, being the senior senator, Senator Turner Ford, would you be so kind as to kind of give us your thoughts on this legislative session?
Sure, did I catch my breath?
I'm sorry?
No, 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 no.
Would you rather?
I am fine.
Okay.
Good morning to everyone.
Good morning. Thank you so much for being here.
No, thank you, Mayor, and the members of the board and the community that are present. I thank you for this opportunity to present today. We are, I would say, more than halfway through the session, but there's still a lot to be done. We are presently taking up appropriations bill. Bond deals are being discussed, so we're talking projects, trying to get funding for local efforts. The medical marijuana legislation has passed. It's actually been signed into law by the governor. It was actually signed on February the 2nd. So, I'm not sure what position you all intend to take regarding opting out.
Well, I'm happy to share that with you, as long as we're in a kind of a conversation here. I have heard from no one on my board, and I certainly am not interested in opting out. So, as far as I'm concerned, we are taking no action whatsoever and letting the state rule the day.
Sure.
And if I have a board member who wants to speak up otherwise, now would be an opportunity to do so. But again, I've not had anybody reach out to me.
And I only mention it for the purpose of, I would say, timekeeping.
Yes, ma'am.
That bill was signed into law by the governor on February the 2nd. And the provision regarding if a board or the county or municipality wants to opt out, there's a 90-day trigger.
Yes.
That's what will be required. So, I just put it on the radar for whatever action you all intend to take.
Yes, ma'am.
I did bring a copy of the bill for anyone who had some late-night reading time.
I've read it, so...
And with that being said, I think, I did reach out to MML, and I asked them to send me a copy of their tracking report. A number of the bills that they presented have died, and they have not updated their list. So, that may be a resource for you all to check, you know, from time to time.
Fortunately, they do send us out weekly a tracking list.
Senator Williams and I have introduced a bill to extend the repealer.
Thank you so much. We are deeply grateful for that.
Yes, for the local tax.
Yes, ma'am.
We talked about trying to get the 10-year extension, but typically, the prerogative of the chair of local and private is for four years. And that's the year that's actually indicated in the bill. It's been assigned to the local and private committee. The bill number, I have it here, just in case you all want to look for it. The bill number is 2993.
Okay.
So, we're hoping, this, local and private measures are not suited to the same general bill deadline that we have. The next deadline for our action will be Tuesday. And that would be for bills that have originated in the opposing chamber and have been referred and to be reported out of the committee. So, we're not concerned about Tuesday's deadline as it relates to your measure. There's still time. So, that would conclude my report, and I'm sure that Senator Williams has some additional information to provide. I'll yield questions if there are any.
Okay, well, Alderman Rupp slid me a little note, but I'll let him answer the question because it has come up recently here. I have a constituent in particular who is very concerned about kratom. And so, I think Alderman Rupp wanted to ask that question as well.
What about kratom?
Okay, let's be clear. I understand that there's some discussion about kratom on the, I don't know, Senate side or House side, about banning it statewide. Are you familiar with that?
Slightly. I do understand that the bill has been referred to committee and is due to be reported out, but I have not been a part of any discussions. I've just kind of heard some local things, but nothing in terms of legislature. Senator Williams, do you have additional information?
About the same information. I've been contacted by a ton of constituents in regard to that issue as well. It's a House bill, I think, 624. I may be wrong on that. We can definitely find that out for you. It has passed the House, and it's been referred to the Drug Policy Committee, which I sit on.
Okay.
Chairman Jordan is the chair of that, and I intend to have a conversation with him about bringing that out. There's a lot of interest in that.
Okay, so it has passed the House?
Yes.
Well, if I can weigh in on that one. It is much better, from my perspective, I think, from the city perspective, that it be taken on a statewide level as opposed to having municipalities deal with it individually. So, I really would appreciate y'all handling that.
Does the city have a position on the bill?
Well, no. I don't care. We haven't talked about it.
It's a little confusing because states have banned it, some municipalities have banned it, but the FDA hasn't banned it.
Correct.
And it, for us on the front lines, it's hard to know how to respond to constituents because there's so much conflicting. If it's as bad as some say, then why has there been no federal action? Or why are the states and cities picking and choosing? So, to be honest, I just don't know what the proper response is. But those who are adamantly against it are very passionate about that. And what's in the bill, I guess would be it?
It's a complete statewide ban from the Drug Policy Committee.
Well, I know Chief Ballard is concerned about it as well, and I think he's been facing, you know, dealing with other things and not bringing it forward. But that's one of those things that I think he is supportive of. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. So, from that perspective, I think it's something that certainly, if a statewide ban is an option, then I think that would probably be very preferable to us having to deal with it individually.
I would completely agree with that. Some research I've done on constituents start burning me up. I try to become a little bit more knowledgeable. I don't consider myself an expert, but I have gone to law enforcement initially to try to have their input on it. And they lean towards a ban of it. As I've tried to do a little bit more research, it's really, it splinters out a little bit. You've got synthetic kratom, and you've got a leaf kratom. My research kind of points synthetic kratom, bad. It should probably go away. The leaf kratom, in other words, you've got the plant, you boil it, you give it to you and do that stuff out of it, has potentially some municipal purposes that have a benefit. So, you know, I think that it's not an all-or-none situation. It's probably not the best way to go, but looking at synthetic, I don't see anything positive in the research. I'd be on synthetic kratom.
It sounds like it needs to be regulated in some form or fashion. And right now, it is not in any way that I'm aware of.
That is definitely a conclusion, John. Again, I weigh my opinion on law enforcement as I talk to them and the history that they have with it and the firsthand testimonials I have from people that are, you know, they have loved ones that have been addicted or addicted to it and that type of thing.
Right, okay.
And I hear the same things that you hear about people who are concerned, but also know people who find that it has been very beneficial for them. And so, I think it's a much more nuanced discussion than people want to take.
That's why I don't have absolution in the ban in that sense, but you know...
But the mixtures and the synthetic piece, I think there's probably more consensus there that that is not something we would want to do.
The synthetic things that come in, CDVs and things of that nature as well, referring back to marijuana, are, can be very dangerous. They come in from out of country, and the way they're not regulated, where they're manufactured, you know, they're going to do it cheapest the way they can. If there's not like FDA regulation, you don't know what you're getting. And that's the biggest concern, I think.
Let me acknowledge Representative Robertson has been able to make it, and we thank you very much. We were talking about kratom.
Sorry for being late.
No, that's okay. We were talking about kratom, and Senator Williams was saying that he thought it had passed the House? A ban had passed the House?
A ban, I'll be real honest with you, I'm not in favor of a ban. I think some regulations would be good, but this is a personal opinion. If you have a ban, you're going to create a black market. You're not going to stop whatever is coming in through the internet or anything else. And keep in mind, the feds have not scheduled.
Right, right.
So, I met with some people, the gentleman that came down for the, he represents the organization that's for pure kratom. They're basically saying that they are perfectly content. We did a age limit, a, there's a standard.
A framework that exists.
Right. There's a standard out there that gets rid of, and it has to be an FDA-approved manufacturing site that they actually make this product. They brought, goodness knows, this, some of this stuff started two and a half years ago when I was Drug Policy Chairman, and at that time, and my question back then was, if, you know, this stuff is so bad, why are we not, why are the feds not scheduling it? And I got a lot of different answers, but I never could quite get it pinned down exactly. And look, there's opinions on both sides of this. I don't want to suggest that my opinion is what the legislature's opinion is. This is just my opinion. The proposal that the Drug Policy Chairman this year brought out from the House side, I did not vote for. Me and several other people didn't vote for it, but it passed on the House side. I think that part of the reason it passed, there's a, you do have a certain faction of the population that sees this as a very dangerous product, and it very well possibly could be. But some of the arguments being made on the other side suggests that there is a, another side to this, and a lot of the stuff that is possibly hurting people are the products, like you said, that are coming from, they call them spiked kratom products. And these spiked kratom products may have fentanyl in it, it may have, gosh, it could have all sorts of things in it. Frankly, it should be some kind of standard that's done. I just don't think that the way we're approaching the problem right now, at least on the House side, I don't know, I've got a feeling on the other side, there's going to be a difference of opinion as well. But I just think in the future, I don't think we're fixing anything. I think it's going to be a problem. Problem that we're creating, and black market kratom is far more dangerous than at least what we have now. And I'm not so certain that what we have now is perfect, so I'm not suggesting that. But I think some standards would help. 21 and over would be a great start. And then requiring the standard of, it has, it cannot be a spiked product. I think that that would be a real good start. And then, on top of all, if we schedule it, some of the testimony I've gotten, if we put this on a schedule, then we also are basically telling our research centers that you can't do anything with it. If you schedule this, at least in Mississippi, you're basically saying that anybody who does the research, if there is any health benefits to it, and I've heard from people who use this stuff that they claim that it's helped them to get off of really hard drugs. That's a hard place to be. Now, I have heard the other side of the argument that it's, some of this stuff is just as addictive as, you know, other terrible products. But I just, where I stand on it today, at this moment, is that scheduling it is not the answer.
Okay.
There's some people that have different opinions about.
Well, we'll see what the Senate does, but I was, we were talking, and I think whatever happens, I would certainly, from my perspective, would prefer it be statewide rather than, you know, Columbus bans it, we don't, West Point does, Tupelo, you know, whatever. Some sort of across-the-board understanding of how it ought to go. So, anyway, well, anyway, I appreciate you joining us. Yes, ma'am.
May I add a comment?
Yes.
I prefer, now, my preference would be that the ban would actually come from the federal government.
Yes.
Simply because I don't think it's fair for us to be in a situation like we are with marijuana, where it's legal in some states and illegal in others. That would just be my preference, and I think the same position would apply as it relates to counties and municipalities, if it's illegal in certain areas, but then not in others. But it has not become before, it has not become before me. I'm not on the Drug Policy Committee in the Senate. But I understand that there was a hearing, maybe two years ago. Was it a joint hearing?
It was a joint hearing, and it was real good to get a lot of information from it. But keep in mind, Mississippi would be the only state that scheduled it.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, thank you for that.
The board was presented.
Thank you for being with us. And any board member have any questions of Senator Turner Ford? We'll hit her while we got her, and then we'll roll to...
I'd like to roll in and get, and count, have a round robin after that.
Okay.
Everybody.
All right.
That wait, I'll be waiting. Thank you so much for being here. That's good information.
Senator Williams?
I think Senator Ford did a great job explaining everything. Some of the things that I've kind of been focusing on is the economic pieces of what we're doing. Is, I know the city has several big asks that we're working towards. Representative Rob and I have talked several times, and hopefully, we're going to see some traction with that as we go forward with, these would be bonding things. There's a good chance we won't have a bond this year because we've got enough money in the bank. I hope that's what happens anyway. But it doesn't mean we won't fund those things. They'll just come out of appropriations budget instead of a bonding budget, which is a very good thing. As I mentioned before our meeting, I'm trying to make contacts with the leadership and push the projects that are here. I think some very good projects, Starwell, as y'all know, going on, the Main Street project is great. ARPA, discuss the ARPA money that's out there. I know the city's been a very good steward, holding on to money, holding on to that money, hoping we'll have a match with that. We passed out the bond bill out of the Senate, sent it to the House for the water. It's $750 million. $350 million of that would be available, we hope, for matching funds. We'll probably go into conference with the House in the next few weeks. And I feel we're going to come out with a very good product. It may be a little bit different than that, but I think these monies, we're going to see some significant dollars allocated in the ARPA. Would you reflect that, Representative Robertson?
Give me a promotion, wow. Really? I think the, it, look, my brother would be that we have a large chunk of this money set aside, and then the Water Association, whether it be rural or whomever, apply for this. And the problem that we're going to have, if we don't do it that way, is we're going to have every Water Association have a line item to a certain amount, and that's going to be a nightmare. Having that chunk of money set aside and let there be an application process, we'll have a lot more checks and balances to how the money is spent and where it's going. Look, in Octavon County alone, how many Water Associations do we have?
14 or 17.
But as that pertains to us municipal water system like we have, that's, you're not talking about...
The framework of the Senate's version, and like I say, I mean, we've both got to come up with it, and it'll move around. There's three buckets of money, if you will. We've got $350 million as for rural water that, under our version, the EQ would administer, will create the rules and guidelines, administer the grant process, oversee it in conjunction with the Health Department. Because those are the entities and agencies that touch the rural water. That's $350 million. It's a one-to-one match for them as well. There's a $350 million bucket for cities that's for the same thing. Two separate buckets of money. The whole bill is $750 million, but there's three buckets. $350 million, and that's where the 6.2, I believe, that the city has, we would go. Same process through the EQ, do that, they'll vet the projects. And if our numbers are right, there's about $380 million money that the city's got. And a lot of it's already been spent, so it's not available for match. So, we can about fully fund what the cities have out there through that bucket, is what we're hoping. There's an additional $50 million bucket that's out there for cities that got less than $1 million. Usually, water projects are going to be several million dollars, if you've got a $3 million project. And you could get a two-to-one match. In other words, if you've got a million, we can get you two out of that $50 million bucket. Doesn't apply to Starwell because we've got more than $1 million here, but, you know, Ackerman and some of these other cities might not have. So, that's how that, the framework of that bill, and hopefully, we'll stay, I hope, close to that. To me, that's one of the bigger ones that we did from the ARPA funding. You know, there's $1.7 billion, and that's almost half of it right there.
Do we anticipate that this will be done, closed out, and understood, finalized by the end of the session? Or are we looking at going into, okay, I saw that face. It's like, hell, not no, but hell no.
Honestly, I don't know. It's my understanding that the House is, the Senate's proposal is to spend all of the ARPA funds, but the House is to spend half. And somehow, you know, where the meeting place or common point would be between those two ranges of thought? I have no idea at this point.
And forgive me for talking more on this one, but I was on the Senate ARPA Committee, so I kind of did the deeper dive in it. I went around and talked to all eight elected statewide positions, those people and the Speaker, about it. Rural water, this water right here is one thing nobody had an issue with. So, I hope if we don't get it all allocated this year, we've got time, this is, I would hope to think that this is one of the top priorities, this one. In some shape, form, or fashion, we'll get some dollars allocated by the time we sign EDA, which is five weeks from now, and hopefully, start that process.
You're talking about ARPA money?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the House is looking at only matching half? Is that what you're saying?
The, what we're probably, where this starts getting complicated is there other sources outside of water that the House wants to be able to help fund? We're dealing with one of those projects here that could potentially affect, from my standpoint, I don't care how we fund this project. If we do the same version, I don't care how we fund our project, just so long as we get our project. So, my position is, as long as...
One, a lot of what Congress intended this bill, with the paper, this enormous water and sewer infrastructure, ticking time bomb we have, not here, y'all, even the country, that cities can't pay for. And so, I mean, that's, and I know, say, Mississippi's aware, y'all are aware of that. So, pushing that out as expeditiously, as quickly as possible to us, where we can get these products on the drawing board for these very, very expensive water. So, there's some stormwater, we've got some stormwater stuff too, but these aging out, 100-year-old water lines are the, in the main parts, ever seen in the state of Mississippi, put a water system in in 1905 or 1910, or something like that. 1900 here. It has got these old failing water lines that they're not, that problem not going to go away. And so, I think, or at least when I started reading what the ARPA bill, the American Recovery thing was, it seemed like the spirit, the intent of that was for one-time money for cities that couldn't bond. We don't have the bond capacity here to bond out what we need to do. And that that 12-point-whatever million dollars goes a long way to putting in those, that, the new underground infrastructure that we need to carry us for the next 50, 70, whatever, many years, you know, that kind of thing. So, that, but you think that money, that match, what we have, that 6.3, that this year, in a two-year timeframe, when would we get that dollar-for-dollar?
Again, being the junior legislator in the room, I'm optimistic we will because the spirit, as you said, I think we understand that in Jackson, and we want to push it out. And we've got to use these monies. These projects have to be done and paid for by 31 December, 26. If we wait another year or two on some of these, you know, it's going to be hard to hit those.
Well, because you contract the whole idea of how this stuff logistically gets done, because if you get a good G and project's going one time, all the people who do this kind of work, that's going to push it that, you know, into those, near those ends of those time limits and stuff. So, anything, any help we could get on that would be appreciated.
I think the potential too is to run it, you know, if everyone has to spend the money by 2026, you're looking at availability of engineers, supplies, you know, timing issues arise as well. And then there are some entities, I would say, some political subdivisions, counties and cities, did not see, received nearly enough money to even contemplate a match. So, you know, those are issues that have to be considered. And it was just my understanding and speaking with the Speaker that his, you know, the House's plan only proposes to spend half of the ARPA money this session. And so, that's...
Y'all, please don't sit on that money.
I don't think that that, I think it's more, look, I honestly think that there's some large projects out there that they don't want to necessarily hear of, just for water and sewer. I'm just, I think there's a pot of money over there, and I think there's other things that are being fought for, at least on the House side, and we can say it this way, because I don't want to get you guys in the weeds on this at all. But there is a lot of push for projects that have streets involved and some stuff like that that are trying to figure out ways to make certain that that matching fund can go to that as well. So, that, I think that may be the real distinction. It may be a distinction without real merit when it's also done because I think you can't dig up a street without having water and sewer.
Tear the water line.
So, there's a little bit of a misnomer on the fact that whenever you start digging stuff up, you're going to have to replace all of that utility.
Or if you're going to replace it, you're going to have to dig up the street to do it.
So, you're, it's, it may be a distinction without real merit, and I don't know quite what the end game will be on this, but...
I think we hear you loud and clear as, don't sit on the money. Let's start spending the money. I think it should have already been allocated personally, but, you know...
Well, I mean, we plan, we're trying to make plans, and our plans involve, are we going to have to do it? Are we going to get some help doing it? How much help are we going to get to do it? So, you know, if you sit on it for another year, then we're just going to have to march ahead and do what we can do with what we know we're going to get.
I think you can count on help. I really do think you can count on the help.
Yeah.
Now, where that lands is going to be the proof of its footing. So, we've got to figure out where that lands, and, look, I'm shooting for the moon.
I hope you hit it.
I may have to shoot them outside the moon to hit it. The reality is, I think that, at least the three of us, we want to get the most of our communities as we possibly can. And whatever that looks like is where we're probably going to land. And I'm hoping that we're going to have some, at least on my end, I'm trying to get some earmarks so that we know where some of this is going to go.
Well, and we've had the two senators. Do you have anything you want to add to any of this? Because I know there's still a topic laying out there, which is this income tax deal, so...
And we want to discuss that after you get through it.
Any wisdom, any wisdom there?
Wisdom, it may be a stretch for what I'm actually going to provide. There is a large elephant in the room...
I think it's a herd.
Maybe a herd of elephants in the room that are very interested in putting something together. I don't know why we're not necessarily coming up with a compromise that can be agreed on and just moved forward with whatever we're doing. But the House position, the leadership position, is that they want, this is going to be part of the big package, and that's probably the number-one issue for House leadership.
Is there a human cry or a consensus in our state that our state income tax is so burdensome that we're, it's disincentive to economic development? I just don't, I mean, I've been, I was a mayor in a former town, and I've been a public official and worked with the MDA and stuff, and it's just never come up that our state income tax system was disincentive to anybody locally. Because, I mean, we compete with these other states when you get in for a general tire or something like that, and certain, you know, incentives that we do like they do, and we've been pretty successful getting those industries. But I guess what I'm saying is, the state income tax, if you go look at the General Fund in the state of Mississippi, is the second-largest source of revenues for the state's general fund. Almost 30% of the state's general fund. Now, when that's eliminated, I mean, it's next one year, over four years, I mean, that's going to be a significant loss of revenue. And the question is, where's it get made up? And if it does get made up, what gets cut? And what gets cut that filters down to the local government, like City Starwell? Then we got to make up on, all the sisters and sisters said, don't go off to it in this direction too far. But I will say this, I mean, there's certain things that if, if, if there's a loss of revenue that filters down to us in some way... revenue that filters down to us in some way, we'll have to either go to our constituents and say, we're going to have to cut this service and not pay your street, or raise your taxes, one, then we become the bad guys at the local level, because we had to do the, you know, do the tough thing at the local level. So, you know...
Let me address part of what you're saying, because what you're assuming is, is that the plan is not taking that into consideration. The plan is taking that into consideration, at least the one that I looked at.
Revenue neutral.
It's supposed to be revenue neutral whenever it's all said and done. It should be revenue neutral for cities, counties, the whole nine yards. One of the key aspects of this, as I asked the question whether or not it impacts, well, there are opinions all over the world with that. Some people think that it does impact, some people think that it's not going to impact. But here's the, here's the thing, if it's revenue neutral and in other places, like Tennessee, that does not have an income tax, or whether peripheral states, Florida, some other places, the question is whether or not it doesn't not only have a revenue neutral part, but that it could increase the amount of spending that you're actually getting done in your community. And there is an argument, I'm not suggesting to you that I have, I guess, research that shows this, because I think it's going to, in some places it has worked, some places it not. The places that have worked, it didn't have a replacement. You have members of, you do have people out there that are saying they don't want to replace that revenue. That's been the argument we have at the governor's level, he's saying that he doesn't want to replace that money, because that politically sounds better to him.
He's totally unrealistic.
No, I agree with you. I don't think that's a proper way to look at this. If you don't have a way to replace that funding, I certainly not for, for doing it. But assuming that that has a basis and that you're going to create some growth in that revenue stream, I think that it ends up being revenue neutral. And not only do I think it ends up being revenue neutral, I think that it could have a stronger impact for your local economy. And there's always been, my position has always been that food tax, food sales tax needs to be reduced. It hurts the poorest of the poor whenever you're adding 7% off of groceries. So one of the things that I liked about what we're doing is we're getting to a point where food is going to, when you buy at the grocery store, that will be a help to your poor people. Mississippi is the poorest state in the Union. We've got some of the, we've got some of the most government you possibly can have. We love our government. We like to say we don't, but we love it. And unfortunately, it's created, I think, some, some issues as how we approach problems. Now, that being said, can I, can I 100% tell you that this is not going to have some issues or like that, or something in the future that we don't need to look at? Absolutely not. I'm not 100% certain.
Are cities going to be made whole?
Yes.
On the grocery tax?
Yes.
How are we going to be made whole on that?
We did a lot of things, and, I mean, we made laws, we made...
I'm just saying, we get 18% of 7% sales tax in Mississippi, there's no, that includes groceries also. And for cities like, I'll say Starkville, not Columbus, not Tupelo, because they got a bunch of big car dealerships and things like that, but here, we sell a lot of groceries. And we're about to get enough, we really kick it in groceries. A lot of our, $600,000, $800,000, about $7.5 million of sales tax every year, here comes from, directly from the sale of groceries. Now, how will the city of Starkville be made whole if you cut sales tax on groceries from 7% to 4.5% or 4%? And I, and that diversion rate doesn't change, and our revenue goes down by half or 3/4 of a million dollars.
But the diversion rate does change.
Diversion, if you can make us whole on that.
The diversion rate changes.
And that's, I think that's what we want to hear, is that y'all are cognizant of this.
The bill we passed on the floor Wednesday changes the diversion rate to make cities whole.
On groceries or on all sales tax? On groceries.
Well, our, the Senate is not to, you know, the Senate's proposal has a 2% reduction in grocery tax, but does not have a sales tax increase.
Right.
And again, I don't, we don't want to get into debating, I mean, it's, to go back to your question, if I may, and I jumped in midstream, did I need to wait? Does this need to be done? A year and a half ago, it wasn't talked about, but it's on the table now, and it's being talked about. And how we proceed is what it is, I think that's a debatable question, you know, does it really bring economic attractiveness to it? But there's a growing constituency that does that, and it feeds the narrative of smaller government, which is what a lot of constituency in the state is, so there's, that momentum is growing. But keeping the cities whole with everything that's done is paramount, I think, on either of the plans, that's something that's there. I look at it fairly simplistically, we've got two plans, I can say it's on the table. The House is swinging for the fences, they're shooting for a home run. The Senate, we're looking for a single. But ours is a very metered, methodical plan that we know is doable, it has zero triggers in it, it's a four-year phase out of the 4% tax bracket. The sales tax decrease, I mean, the grocery tax decreases immediately, so it's very methodical, with a thinking that once we get towards the end of the implementation of that, we look again and see if the metrics of the House are as valid as the House thinks they are. There's concern on the Senate side that maybe they're not. Again, that's debatable, but if you're further down the road, and when you look at it, we've got, what we're proposing is a $319 million tax cut of recurring revenues. It's 450, but there's a rebate that's only a one-time, it doesn't come back. It's $319 million, which is a 5% cut of the state tax budget, of the historical tax budget, not the inflated budget as a result of the COVID and all the funny money that's in the economy. That's where the plan is, whereas I believe the House plan is a 12-year phase out of the income tax. It's not an immediate thing. It's with triggers, and we've got to sustain a certain level of growth, and the metrics work if the triggers are hit. So, you know, I've tried to dive into both of them and understand them, and then they both work on paper, you know, if you will. I, believe me, I've entered a lot of things on paper that aren't reality, but, you know, is that kind of a summation of the plans, but keeping the cities whole is paramount. And one important thing to us, and I say us, on the Senate's plan, as lawmakers, is important to the majority as a whole, I think, to move down this path. But the tax increase, you know, are trying to avoid that as we go forward. Can we lengthen the plan and not have a sales tax increase? Because that could actually put us at an advantage from economic growth. If we keep it at 7, instead of going to 8.5, whereas our surroundings are, they have it, that's how they offset, that would be a great feat, I think, if we can figure that out.
And, well, Alderman Sistrone.
No, I was going to go to the Senate.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to weigh in? I apologize.
Well, my, I would say my position is more conceptual or theoretical. I think what we're hoping for is some sort of compromise between the two plans. I would be very shocked if either one of them actually makes it across the finish line as is, but that's, that's just my subposition.
No, you're right.
Sounds like you've set up for that. Alderman Sistrone, did you have something?
And what I wanted to say was, and I think y'all have hit this nail on the head, is that we wanted to be sure that, not just for Starkville, but even in smaller cities where their primary sales tax revenues do come from groceries, that there's an awareness that there's a real impact at the local level, and that that's being addressed.
I think everyone in this room has made sure that the decision makers in Jackson are fully aware, we don't want any cut at the local level, we want it all to be made whole, and is...
And there's a lot of ways to skin that cat.
Right, but we want it to be as black and white as it can be, in the sense that if you, if you really got diversions that are really crazy in two legislative sessions, they could remove those, you know, that could change. We've got to keep the dollars here as clean as we can, I think. Am I saying that the right way? I mean, I'm learning about diversions and all that stuff. Not that they're bad things, they're good things, when you've got one thing that you're trying to figure another part, but the cities and the counties have got to remain whole, because there's not enough money as it is.
The cities are the economic engine state of Mississippi. Think about, think about what the jobs are created, and think about the largest single source of revenue from the state's general fund is sales tax. 80% of that sales tax is generated within incorporated municipalities. In other words, look at whatever, 1. whatever, $2 billion of that $6 billion comes from sales tax, and 80% of that's come from inside city limits. So we generating that money, the state's using for general purposes. I will say this too, and Senator Williams, you're from Tennessee, when you compare Tennessee and Mississippi, you can compare apples and oranges. Tennessee has a different tax system of them. First of all, the hall income tax up there only taxed dividends and interest. So it wasn't the kind of income tax we have, it was easier to phase out, and they did it over four years. What they did in Tennessee to offset that thing, they increased jet gasoline excise tax, and they're actually pushing some of that money back to cities for their general funds. Tennessee, that's a creed, but they did it that way. The other thing, and this is the elephant in the room about that stuff, is that every state that touches Mississippi has state sales tax and local sales tax. And in Shelby County, Mississippi, Shelby County, Tennessee, Tennessee has a 7% state sales tax, except for the grocery thing. And then Tennessee, Memphis, and Shelby County, both stack their local sales tax. And when the state cuts sales tax on groceries, that doesn't affect Memphis's local tax or Shelby County's, and that's the same all of the states of Tennessee. So what the state does up or down on the grocery sales tax in Arkansas, and Louisiana, Alabama, they don't have any cut on anything over there, but Tennessee, Arkansas, Louisiana, doesn't affect local municipalities' revenue streams, their sales tax is still stacked on top of groceries, whatever that state's sales tax rate is, in Tennessee, and Arkansas, and Louisiana. Here, if you don't, without some adjustment on that diversion, because it's all the tax, the state's sales tax, it's going to hurt us. That's where we absolutely got to have that thing. But I would just say that when we compare us to Tennessee, and you know this, and y'all know this more than anything else, they have a different system up there. And we try, keep saying, you know, grocery sales tax cut here, but it's a state sales tax here. Up there, they delineate between, or they differentiate between the state's sales tax, county's sales tax, the municipal's sales tax, and state of Tennessee. So it's a different thing.
And one of the other things is unintended consequences won't appear until later on, and I will give you an unintended consequence right now that's very, I'm very aware of. For example, when I paid my income tax to the state of Mississippi, I cut a check to the Emerson Family School directly into the local economy here. If that goes away, then that goes away. So not that, you know, I'm eager to pay my income tax, but the fact that it, it will have an impact in ways that you won't, you won't think about until after all of that bubbles to the surface. So just as an FYI.
So that it's clear, especially for the three of us, we have no, no reason not to protect what y'all did, and I will make it clear that we understand that y'all have needs that, that have to be protected. So I don't want you to think that there's not that thought process, because I can tell you right now that, that, well, honestly, I haven't talked to anybody on either side that doesn't understand that where the rubber meets the road.
Right here.
Right here. So we get that, I don't want you to think that that's not being taken into consideration. Will this be perfect on either one of these things? I will not promise you that, because some of this is, there are unintended consequences, and I have no doubt that we may end up finding out some of those unintended consequences. Oklahoma found out some unintended consequences.
Kansas found out real, real quick, I'll tell you.
There's several things, but keep in mind, in those places, they didn't have triggers for the diversion, nor did they have ways to, to increase on one side, in other words, ways to pay for it. They, I think Oklahoma just basically did away with it and didn't try to replace it.
Kansas did too.
So it...
Their general fund dropped 11% in one year, $700-something million. They went to all their state agencies and said, we prepare for draconian cuts, you know, cross-the-board cuts in all state agencies, because they didn't prepare for what, how they were going to place their income.
To your point, I think you're exactly right, so we just have to be cognizant of what we're trying to accomplish.
And I like your idea of triggers and knowing that you're hitting your benchmarks and, and you're progressing in the way that you thought you were going to. So I think that's responsible.
Well, and we have taken up a lot of y'all's time, and we are very grateful that you would take the time to come to us. We appreciate it. So unless there's, unless there's something else, we will...
Ma'am, I have to miss you one more time.
Yes, you may.
You knew it would not be.
Well, we, let's be respectful of their time.
Would the roof have not caved in?
It had already caved. Go ahead.
I know that this is a politically charged issue, Dan Jackson, it shouldn't be, but to me, as a public official locally, and as, you know, just a person that tries to look across our state and see what would benefit our state economically, Medicaid expansion would be one of the most practical things to inject a lot of, you know, new money into our state that would benefit hundreds of thousands of people, small hospitals, turn money over. And I will suggest this, I know it becomes a politically ideological thing, but in Arkansas, for some strange reason, a Democrat, eight years ago, nine, 10 years ago, a Democrat governor and a Republican state house up there found a way to find a compromise and make, and expand Medicaid, and it has been a tremendous benefit to a state that is the same size of population of Mississippi, same GDP, same household income, just would like to conjoin identical twins almost, with one exception. There are 250,000 more people in the state of Arkansas than the state of Mississippi that have a health card in their pocket. And by the way, they went to Washington and got HHS to do a special exception for them, y'all know about that, it's called the private option. And the way that that thing became a compromise in Arkansas and got the Republicans going along with it was when a person qualifies for expanded Medicaid in Arkansas, they get on Arkansas's website, and they buy a private policy, and the expanded Medicaid money pays for it. And so they've got a signal, United Healthcare, they walk in, and that person in expanded Medicaid's got a private healthcare company policy in their pocket. Arkansas gets the comp, gets that money for that, the person gets the coverage, the hospital gets compensated, the money turns over three or four, five times in the economy. What's not, and the most, the most liability the state, according to federal government, and of course, that could change their rules, the most liability the state of Arkansas or any state will ever have is 10%. I put up a dollar to get $9 every year from now to perpetuity, they get $1 billion a year in the state of Arkansas, and they get 900 million, they put up 100 million.
Sounds like a good letter to the Senator.
What kind of leverage is that not, you know, in anybody's world? And their, if you look at their health outcomes, and you look at their household incomes, they start to creep away from us. And if I were a legislator in Mississippi, I don't know what the heck's going on in Arkansas, because they have no more resources and no more reason to be any better than we are. I'd spend a day and shadow somebody in Little Rock and pick their brain and find out what's, how they did that, pull that off, and how every year they've continued to renew it, to help for the betterment of their state and those quarter million people that now have a healthcare card in their, in their pocket. You talk about an economic development potential thing for our state? Expand Medicaid and show the people in California, Connecticut, and wherever that's got the money to want to build industries down here that we're forward enough thinking to do that, and see how that helps economic development down here. So, now with that said, I'm out of it.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to address that real quick.
Okay.
We, I dropped a bill this year to expand coverage for post-ARPA care for women now. I do not want to call this Medicaid expansion.
Appreciate you doing this, we're delighted.
Somebody quit with your heart, but if that's still got legs right now, and that post-ARPA care for 12 months after the fact, for a woman to be able to get care would be huge for, I mean, it's a small step, but it would be huge for the population, so if you keep that on your radar screen, I would really like to see that...
To technically address that, it is not expansion, it's an enhancement.
I agree with you.
We passed it out of the Senate, so it's very much allowed, and it should go to conference if they're not identical bills.
In Arkansas, they didn't want to call it Medicaid expansion, they call it the private option. But whatever you call, if you get, take the, if the federal government sends you a billion dollars a year, take it and turn it over in the economy and help 300,000, I think 300,000 people here would benefit from it, and just see how that money's going to turn over and how people will benefit. And these little hospitals like at Ackerman and Calhoun City and places like that, that I read a thing up from Kaiser the other day, said there's 35 hospitals in the state of Mississippi on the brink of not making it. Now, they won't all close, but if in 10 years, five or six of them close, I'm from Newton, the freaking hospital in Newton closed, because they lost that critical access designation, and that's a big darn deal. And you talking about economic development in the state? Take hospitals, take five or 10 or 15 hospitals out of, out of a small town that serves a certain region like that, see if you'll ever get an interest in that town. So that's the kind of thing that is, I think, is the legislature and is the state we need to be forward-thinking about, and this is a no-brainer. This is just, okay, here's a billion dollars, we either get it, or it's going to go to Oklahoma, or it's going to go to Arkansas, or it's going to go to Louisiana. By those, that's three southern states that have expanded Medicaid, and Arkansas, goodness knows, if they can do it, we certainly need to look seriously at doing it.
Okay. Period on that?
I yield.
Thank you. You didn't have it in the first place. Representative Robertson, anything else?
I just want y'all to, to, I want the projects that we're then talking about to continue being moved forward.
We want to.
So know that you have people that are on the team, we're doing everything we can to, to make certain that these projects continue to, to develop, I guess is the best way to say it. it. We work great together, you're not, we don't.
Representative Taylor included, even though he's not here. We appreciate what y'all do.
Absolutely, he does a great job, too. I don't want to leave him out of that. We appreciate y'all. We, listen, the hardest job I ever had was sitting on board, Alvin, by the way.
Well, we are so grateful that y'all took the time to come, because I know that your time is incredibly, it pulled in many directions. So thank you for taking the time to come, and thank you for what you do for us. And, you know, as soon as we get word of something, you know how important it is, we'll be able to move forward, but we're going to move forward anyway, y'all. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Y'all take care, have a good weekend.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Really appreciate you being here.
Glad to have you.
Just take.
Feel free to reach out.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Bye-bye, y'all.
Contact us, 101, whatever, we're here.
Okay. Bye-bye. Thank you. All right, guys, this is a fairly quick agenda, we can make fairly short work of it, I think. Three sets of minutes, Chris, any of those, issues with any of those?
No, ma'am.
All right. Consent for those guys? Any issues? Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything necessarily that I'm going to put on here from a mayor's comment standpoint. Thank you again. Board of Alvin comments, anybody have anything they want in print? No? Okay. No citizens, I mean, no public appearances this time? We have two public hearings, one of them is a second public hearing on the UDC for signs. We'll be bringing that one back a third, a third time, so this one is just going to be a public hearing. Chris has made some modifications to it, which you pointed out in your cover sheet or in the information that you provided?
Well, I'm not sure what the cover sheet ended up being, because Daniel was drafted in that.
Okay, Daniel?
I have a question.
Okay.
So I can expand on that if you want me to, very quickly, Mayor.
Yeah, if you don't mind, real quick.
Sure. So what we did is we went away from what we were drafting, which was to allow the city to go on somebody's property and take down a sign and lean against it. We changed that just to reference the code enforcement section that's already in the UDC, saying the city would have any and all remedies allowed by that section. Those two things, the self-help and lean, are not in that section, but we have penalties and fees and fines and abatement and nuisance and injunctive relief opportunities. And so it's going to reference that. The incentive remains the same. If you comply, you don't have to pay the fee for the new sign.
Okay. Thank you. And we will, again, we will have another hearing on it, so it'll come up at the next meeting. We've got a variance, another public hearing, then a variance request, which is just a setback. It was approved unanimously?
Yes, and it's very similar to the last variance requested, sunroom, backyard.
Right. Okay. So not much of a big deal. The mayor has no business, which I'm very excited about this time, but the board, the board does, we've got engaging Kim Lee Horn to develop a final master plan and construction documents for George Evans Needmore and Phase One of McKee Park. And so in my estimation, you know, McKee is one of our obligations as we got that 1% passed, and as we take stuff out of McKee, we need to be ready to put stuff into McKee. And so that's the reason for this, and of course, Needmore, George Evans, is a fairly high priority in the sense that it has had absolutely nothing done to it in a good couple of decades. So that's the reason for moving forward with that. And in your package, you should have information on the presentation of each one of those. And then I have received yesterday, and I have gotten it into the packet, a timeline from Henry Minor on what that timeline would be for moving forward with those, and I will get that available, make that available to you as well. So that's what that is about. And if anybody wants to put that on consent, I'm perfectly willing to put a big old C by it.
I'd love to, if you think that we could stay there.
Anybody got any issues? Well, let's see. Anybody got any issues with it? So, okay, well, let's try it. We'll put it on consent and see if it flies. How about that? Airport, this is a license agreement, and this is, this is at no cost to us, this is going to be, I hate to say experiment, because experiment is not exactly right, but it is a testing site or a, they're testing in essence for tornadoes, which we hope they have no results from, but it is an opportunity to, it's kind of like an AWAS system, only it's a, Texas Tech is doing this. You've looked at the agreement, no issues?
It's ready to go.
Okay.
Isn't that like dropping antimatter into matter, you know, come with Texas Tech, putting it on the whole turf of?
Well, actually, I think it's probably them spending a little of their money here, which I'm okay with. So consent for that one. We have two independent consultants for architectural review, and we have two positions and two, three positions and two vacancies.
We have total.
Okay. So we're, we're looking at two of the ones that are already with us, and we're perfectly satisfied with the work that we've?
We can, you know, we can, we're satisfied with our work, we can offer it to you for a meantime.
Okay. All right. Consent for that one? Consideration of a request for a final plat approval, anything about that one that's special, Daniel?
This is just a kind of a altering of the property lines for the future McDonald's site, which is the current McDonald's, Trevor, a gas station site, and they're just going to like the property line of them, just the west side of that, so it'll make the development of the McDonald's.
Okay. All right. And no issues with the boards that, or it was a, okay.
That was a probably DRC approval, starting going through that process.
Okay. And no issues from there? Okay.
Which side is, this is the McDonald's site?
Oh, 12.
McDonald's on the little west side of town across the river.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it says Highway 12 East here.
Oh, well, it would be Highway 12 West.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Lisa, would you make that correction, please, ma'am? Thank you. All right, engineering, we have a utility agreement, CEI proposal for the electric project, Edward?
Yes, ma'am.
There you are. Anything about that one you'd like to share?
This is a, just a high-level view, this is an agreement with Starkville Utilities, for Starkville Utilities to perform all corridor work. The reason why we chose to proceed in this way is because we're going to follow our state public procurement and utilities public procurement process instead of the MDOT process. It's a much simplified, more simplified process, and it is their facilities. So Adwell and Jeth has done the design, we're also proposing that they will do the construction engineering oversight and inspection for that off corridor portion.
And the good news is, it's another step down the road on the bill grant, so.
Yes, it is.
Mayor, one tag to that.
Yes, sir.
So there are two contracts, there's the utility contract and the engineering contract, and there's consensus, we probably need to split those up on the agenda, so I'll work with Lisa. This item will be two items.
Okay.
Same materials, but we just are splitting the contracts up since it's two distinct things.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with putting them both on consent once they're split? No? All right, let's work, let's work it that way, Lisa, please, ma'am. We've got a change order for the Old West Point Road Bridge, it came in under, and Edward is going to add a little riprap and what else was it?
Some concrete curving.
Oh, some concrete curving. So that's good news, because it came in that way. So consent for that one? Declaring machine-mounted hydraulic, this is all surplus, and auction on gov. or gov. deals, and so consent for that one. The last one on here, we will be getting those bids in on Monday, no, Tuesday.
Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning, and so we will not be able to fill in the blanks until Tuesday, so we can leave it off until we get that information. Claim stock is not a part of that. Fire department, permission for SFD to enter a mutual aid agreement? We've got that arrangement done?
We do, I drafted that agreement last night, and so we had been doing that, this memorializes what we've been doing, made it an interlocal agreement to make sure it conforms with the law.